Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the Budget Workshop to order. It's 9:03. And it's good to see everyone without masks. I think this is the first meeting that we've had, literally, in every year. And I know this is going to be a great Budget Workshop. With that, let me go ahead and just turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, I'll be brief. I know we want to get to business, and I think our resource management staff has done a good job putting us in a position, the Commission, in a position to provide good guidance as it relates to this year's budget. So the frame of today's discussion will be an update on our current operating budget. We'll do a check-in in terms of how we're doing, take a look at the Capital Improvement Plan, but I believe the majority of the discussion will be related to the Rescue Act funds and how they can be used in the direction of the Commission. So it's a pretty full briefing, and we certainly are looking for Commission feedback at the conclusion of today's workshop. At this point, Mr. Mayor, if you will, I'll turn it over to Robert Wigan and his staff. They've, again, like I said, I think they've done a great job. They've done a lot of comparing notes with other cities, working directly with our county counterparts to come up with something that I think gives a lot of structure and is a very workable plan. So with that...
Mr. Manager, before we start, just following the agenda, do we have any other modifications for the agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. I do know that we have two public speakers. Why don't we go ahead and take those before the full presentation, if you don't mind? Then we'll get into the discussion. Jim?
Very good. We do have two speakers. The first will be Henry Choice and then Margaret Moore. The microphone is right there, near the column. If you'll give your name and address, you have three minutes for remarks, and I'll give you a heads-up when you get close to three.
My name is Henry Choice. I'm a manager of the City of Washington. Good morning.
Good morning.
The city commission is still about the breakfast food program that y'all purchased from two years ago. I was in the paper with it and everything. We just didn't finalize it because of the fire sale. Remember, I gave $100,000 donation to Country Walk about a month ago. Thought we might finalize it. He got sick. Marlowe didn't have a meeting with him about finalizing. So I'm trying to understand how we're going to be able to deal with this. It's something like $14 billion a year that y'all can use. It's big. It ain't just so simple. It ain't just for the state. You know, the budget, the budget is big. Nineteen, almost $14 billion. So, you know, I want to go ahead and try to finalize it. Y'all went before the Senate. The Senate approved it. Y'all, Nannas said y'all wanted to purchase it. 1.7 billion, two years. Then the fire sale came up. Then about a year and a half, I haven't been able to deal with it. I'm trying to get an understanding. This is about the budget. I know y'all can use $14, $13 billion a year. You know what I'm saying? It's a fact. You've seen my portfolios, my workshop. You've seen it, right? You approved it. You said, "Oh, man, this is unbelievable." But I showed off, and I, you know what I'm saying? But I'm trying to get an understanding. When we all let everybody see us...
So, I appreciate you coming out. I encourage you, after the workshop, to get with the City Manager and their team to figure out where we are and how we move forward.
Okay. So, I'm just the City Manager after the workshop.
Thanks for coming out.
Hey, thanks. It's two years. It's two years.
Our next speaker is Margaret Moore. Is Ms. Moore with us?
Yeah.
There we go. And we do also have Whitfield Leland, who has signed up to speak.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Margaret Moore. My address is 1910 Monticello Drive. I would like to ask the Commissioners to not approve any budget policy amendments today. I would like you to please examine the Capital Improvement Plan much more closely. I don't want you to cede any voting over projects that cost more than $50,000. I think that should come back as, items like that should need to come back to the public for public input, for discussion, and for a vote. I would like to note that in the, that a key drive for the Police Department's budget is overtime due to protest response last year in heightened security that occurred in mid-January. I understand that might be true as we're talking about the General Fund and that overtime budget is the driver of the General Fund, but I really would like more close examination of the Capital Improvement Plans, projects, including Project 21-415, although I believe that might be under General Fund, I'm not sure. In the past year, a couple checks have been written for $130,000 from the city to the county for a helicopter share, and I would like to know how that all came to be. There's a $1.3 million debt burden on our city now after this cost agreement was shared, and so far, $260,000 have been paid, but we could, you know, stop that plan and reassess perhaps how we'd like to drive our budget in the future. Today, if you pass those policy amendments, you will also be approving a gunshot detection system in FY22, and I don't recall any discussion about that. There is a long list of police line items in the Capital Improvement Plan that need public input, need votes, and cannot, in my opinion, be pushed off to staff to decide. I recall looking at the hierarchy here in Tallahassee, and it's a big group of smiling citizens, and then it's the City Commissioners, and then it's the staff members. So when you give away your vote, you're giving away our vote, and our voices need to be heard on these matters.
You have about 15 seconds.
I would like to request our Commissioners to request much more feedback, a line item budget that has line items on it. I would like to know more about, I'll email you all of the project numbers I would like to know more about, but...
You're at your three minutes.
The CIP is going to funnel out $50 million to TPD over the next four or five years with no oversight, and that scares me, and I hope you hear my concerns, and I hope, I thank you. I'm sorry, I went over.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Whitfield Leland, and that's the last person I have a card for.
Great. Good morning. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Whitfield Leland, 754 West 7th Avenue. I'm only here in support of the recommendation of both the county and the city on the $3 million. So I'm here to say that I support that. I don't know, y'all looking at me like I'm crazy, but from what I understand, it's a joint effort from the city and the county to come up with $3 million to support nonprofits to meet needs. So I'm here to just say that the community roundtable myself do support that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No, sir. Mayor, we did have one person who had registered to speak, connected virtually, but I don't think Donna Cotrell ever, ever connected with us this morning, so we're done with speakers.
Okay. Mr. Manager, let's proceed with the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn it over to Mr. Wigan.
Thank you, City Manager. In honor of our normal WebEx, can you hear me okay? It is nice to be here without masks and see everybody face-to-face, even though we've been able to do it virtually. I think it gives us hope for the future, and hopefully that's the theme for this presentation and this workshop. As you will recall, we were going to meet April 7th. I think at that point, it would have been untimely. We would have probably had some pretty sobering information to deliver about the fiscal year '21 budget, but with the issuance and passing of the American Relief Plan, the Department of Treasury's issuance of guidelines, and then our analysis over the last 10 days, I think it gives us great hope over the next year, two years, three years, period of time. With the ARP, we can fairly assess our fiscal year '21 budget. I feel like we can fairly assess what our proposed '22 through '26 capital budget will be, and then I want your feedback for the funding program, plan for the American Relief Plan, according to the Department of Treasury recommendations for cost recovery. To that end, the fiscal year '21 Budget Workshop has a few workshop agenda goals. We'd like to work through a review of fiscal year '21 priorities and progress. Max Stout will do that on our behalf. He'll talk about the second quarter budget update and then some budget amendments. We'd like to also review the fiscal year '22 through '26 capital plan progress. It's a continuous process that, as we adopted the budget in September, as we notice progress of capital projects, we want to make sure that the most timely projects are moving forward so that we're responsibly using the cash that we have and the borrowing dollars that we have. And so with that, Amy will then talk about how that impacts our fiscal year '22 and through '26 budget assumptions for capital budget preparation, and that's Amy McLean as our presenter for that area. And then, as the City Manager noted, I'll spend most of the presentation time talking about the American Relief Plan. We want to talk about the Treasury requirements as we understand them from our many briefings and our many connections with professional organizations and our partners locally, and then we have some recommended program funding. And I just got a note that said, "Put the mic down so we can hear you." So I'm not on mute, but I still need the mic down. Thanks. We'll accept any questions that you have as we go through the process. I will say that there's time at the end and kind of an encapsulation of the program funding for the American Relief Plan. That may be the best time for those questions so we can look at the full context of the plan, recommendations, and then we'll ask you to vote on some amendments for the capital budget. I'm sorry, the fiscal year '21 operating budget. Amy, I'm sorry, Max, if you wouldn't mind leading us off with the fiscal year '21 budget.
Morning. Review. Thank you, Robert. Mayor, Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to provide the update. Before I get into the second quarter results, I do want to take a moment to provide a brief overview of the fiscal '21, fiscal year '21 budget. The city's total operating budget is $894.7 million, of which $161.8 is for the General Fund, and of course, that supports police, parks and recreation, public infrastructure, and other core services, and $151.6 million for the Capital Improvement Plan. The current budget includes strategic investment in areas such as sidewalk and road maintenance, airport utilities, CHSP, and FY21 Annual Action Plan for Rehousing, temporary homeless shelters, as well as expanded public services in response to COVID-19, and among many other things. Throughout the year, staff monitors economic conditions and indicators that are necessary for the development of the FY22 budget assumptions. It also informs recommendations for adjustments to the current year budget. And of course, throughout this process, the city follows best practices and complies with all state laws and auditing standards, such as GAAP, Gatsby, and others. So if we move to the next slide, this is the very familiar ICMA Financial Trends Monitoring System. Staff uses this system to track key drivers and quarterly performance of the city's 14 operating funds, and based on our review and analysis, we then assign a rating for each fund, and that guides our discussion next steps. So unsurprisingly, green means that the fund is in good condition and expected to end of the year within budget. Yellow means that there's key drivers that we're monitoring, and perhaps there's some sort of budgetary issue that is causing some concern that we need to monitor a little more closely. And of course, red would mean that there's an issue with the fund and immediate action would need to be taken to restore it to balanced state. As you can very clearly see, we have 12 of our 14 funds in the green status. Two are in yellow, and we'll talk a little bit more about them in a moment, and then, of course, no funds are in the red status. Okay, and if we go to the next slide there, I wanted to first highlight a few status changes as they relate to the first quarter update. We had three funds that were in yellow status in Q1, General Fund, Star Metro, and Aviation. We have shifted those to green for the second quarter. A big component of that is, of course, the American Rescue Plan and the relief aid that we're getting through that. For Star Metro, it's a combination of the availability of ARP funding as well as CARES grant funding that they had. Star Metro, obviously by way of FTA, and Aviation by way of FAA. Again, these were stemmed from the CARES Act, though. They were able to budget FY21 monies to cover revenue losses. So with that, with those two things, we felt confident enough to move those from the yellow status to green. Then moving on, as I mentioned, we had two funds that were in the yellow status, the Building Inspections Fund, which was previously in the green status for Q1, and the Fire Services Fund, which was in yellow in the first quarter. For Building Inspections, we've moved this to yellow status largely due to a decline in revenues from permitting. This decline was noted in Q1 but has continued on into Q2. Current analysis projects that this fund will need to draw on reserves at year-end to be balanced, but a key takeaway here is that the use of reserves is not necessarily a cause for concern in this fund. The very nature of the work oftentimes necessitates the use of reserves. You know, permitting fees are collected at the beginning, then work occurs months, sometimes years later. So really, this yellow status is more of an indication that we need to just keep a close eye on those revenues, as well as the construction industry as a whole. For the Fire Fund, not much has changed since the first quarter. We know the issue there, which is that a rate resolution has been passed, and those rates will go into effect for FY22. However, for FY21, the Fire Department is very closely monitoring their expenses, and that will allow us to limit the use of any city reserves at year-end to balance that fund. So moving on to the next slide, as part of the regular quarterly update process, departments are able to request adjustments to their budget plans to better address changing priorities, new issues, as well as shift work based on timing. This allows them to accelerate or de-accelerate projects when it makes sense to do so. And so with that said, we do have several amendments here, and I will do my best to go through them very quickly. First is an amendment for a supplemental appropriation of nearly $617,000 from the EPA revolving loan funds undesignated balance. This funding will provide continued operation of revolving loan funds for brownfield cleanups and other activities. Next is a request for a supplemental appropriation of $470,000 from undesignated 2020 sales tax funding for renovations to Jake Gaither Bathroom and Clubhouse. We also have an amendment requesting a supplemental appropriation of $500,000 from undesignated capital funds for renovation of the Truesdale Aquatic Center locker rooms. Moving on to Electric, there's an amendment requesting a supplemental appropriation of $1.2 million from RRI to support the replacement of old Talquin electric distribution lines and relocation of lines due to an FDOT road widening project. The second amendment from Electric is requesting a supplemental appropriation of $2 million from RRI to continue the accelerated tree, enhanced trees trimming reliability project, which you received, which you received a status update on at your last City Commissioner meeting. For the gas utility, there is an amendment requesting a supplemental appropriation of $500,000 from RRI to support service expansion projects, tap installations, and transfer of warehouse inventory. And finally, there's a request to reprogram approximately $283,000 in available state housing initiatives partnership funding for the demolition and reconstruction of two homes. These homes were previously approved for rehabilitation but have subsequently been deemed beyond repair, so this made the most sense to instead start fresh. And then moving on to the last slide. For me, I'd like to provide a brief policy update. Staff is recommending changes to the capital management policy. This is City Commission Policy 218, along with the prior approved changes to the procurement policy, 242. So the history of this dates back over 10 years, when the City Commission approved various fast-tracking changes for growth management and procurement. Such changes include the authority for the City Manager to award and approve purchases, contracts, and change orders for capital projects as approved by the City Commission in the capital budget. Over time, these were codified in the procurement policy, and today's update will ensure that the capital management policy is now consistent with the language that is currently in the procurement policy. And a full-strike-through copy of that policy is attached in your agenda materials, and with that, I'd like to turn it over to Amy McLean for the capital budget update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, I have an overview of capital planning, a part of which is the annual update of the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP. Updating fiscal year '22-'26 CIP is one milestone in the continuous planning and budgeting process, where longer-term plans for infrastructure and near-term project implementation come together. As projects move forward through the stages of planning, design, and ultimately, construction and completion, departmental project managers continually review the progress of each project and evaluate how to maximize the use of available resources throughout the year. Per our policies, the master plan concept enables project planning to be accelerated or adjusted as needed based on these assessments. Additionally, the quarterly budget updates allow for a nimble approach to project amendments to adjust for these changes. The annual update of the Five-Year CIP provides an opportunity to refine earlier estimates, recast project timing where appropriate, and plan financing for upcoming projects. The plan update currently includes $1 billion for citywide for five years. On the next slide, some of the things we have in the capital project are familiar and near and dear to you. Ongoing capital project initiatives that have already been part of the Five-Year Plan include recurring projects such as roads, pedestrian and street safety improvements, and sidewalks. Large projects such as the Police Department Headquarters, the Senior Center, and the Lake Bradford Fire Station are already in the planning and design phase and are included in their construction phases in the Five-Year Plan. There are a few projects that are new to the plan that I wanted to highlight. The plan does include $1.2 million as part of a real-time crime center, which would be funded jointly by the city, the Leon County Sheriff, and FSU, and possibly other partners. The new real-time crime center will act as a hub for collaboration between the law enforcement agencies in Leon, including the Leon County Sheriff's Office and the Tallahassee Police Department. Also new in this plan is the $9 million biogas utilization project, which involves the construction of a new renewable natural gas facility and an upgrade to existing biogas equipment. With the implementation of these projects, all biogas produced at the city's water reclamation facility will be utilized either on-site or be converted to a renewable natural gas for use in the city's natural gas fleet. $2 million a year in funding is included for Neighborhood First initiatives. This will address blight, incentivize fresh food markets, address food insecurity, and promote neighborhood resilience. The plan also includes $21.6 million in funding for electric buses for Star Metro and construction of the South City Transit Center to include charging equipment to support an all-electric fleet. Utility capital projects are in the Five-Year Plan, and they're substantial as you would expect. There's $267 million for electric and gas projects, $331.7 million for underground utilities and public infrastructure projects. That's over the five years. Due to the long-term investment required for facilities and infrastructure, utilities base their capital projects on 10- to 20-year master plans. Funding of these projects is provided from utility operating funds as transfers or debt service for bonds. As enterprise funds are supported by service charges, it is key to include the capital funding needs identified in the CIP in our periodic rate analysis studies. This ensures that revenues are sufficient for both operating and capital funding over time. On the next slide, I'll touch on some of the other significant projects that are being updated in the plan. That includes $23.8 million for electric transmission and distribution, $23.5 million for the airport's international passenger processing facility, $23 million for Cayman Plaza water intrusion, and $20.9 million for taxiway Bravo rehabilitation at the airport. The fiscal year '22-'26 CIP will continue to be reviewed as funding is identified through our normal process, through hazard mitigation grant programs, federal funding for drinking water and wastewater infrastructure, and other funding that may yet be enacted by Congress for infrastructure initiatives. We will continue to review the needs identified in the plan, assess the utilization of existing project funding to date, and ensure project development continues to be aligned with strategic plan priorities, and bring back the CIP for review on July 7th and adoption in September. And if there's any questions, if not, I will turn it over to Robert.
I've got a question. Mr. Williams Cox.
I do have a question, and thank you for this information. I'm looking at some great numbers here and a great report, but what sticks out to me is that we were allocating only $2 million for Neighborhood First programs, and I'm trying to understand how many neighborhoods would be included in trying to acquire $2 million? And I know that in the CRA, I know this is not a CRA meeting, but we have a couple of neighborhoods that we've allocated $6.4 million for, and that's two neighborhoods at $6.4 a piece. So to have just $2 million for neighborhoods to be, for lack of a better word, competing for, I would hope that we could look at that, figure out how many neighborhoods we're talking about, and see if there's somewhere where we can find more funding, because it's great that we're updating and upgrading infrastructure that the whole city will need, but we also got to make sure that neighborhoods keep up as well. So I would ask that we take a look at that, see if there's any way that we can figure out how to get some more money allocated there for some neighborhoods, you know? So, so it may not have been a question, that was a request. Okay, thank you.
Well, we appreciate the feedback.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. That is a newly carved-out commitment, and we are looking at it for a five-year capital in the Five-Year Capital Budget, so our intention would be to have that in place every year for five years, and it would complement the CRA, as you pointed out, the funding of those neighborhoods, but we'll take your comments and your advisement.
Okay. And let me know how many, how many neighborhoods are part of the Neighborhood First plan, because if we're talking about 20 neighborhoods, even at $2 million a year for that many years, that still wouldn't be enough. So, you know, we're talking about two neighborhoods, and that might, you know, the scale. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no other questions, if that's okay, I'll move on to discussion of the American Relief Plan. Just to provide some context for everyone involved, you know, as we all know, that the American Rescue Plan was, Act was signed into law March 11th, 2021. It's a $2 million, $2 trillion package that directs aid to individuals in state and local and tribal governments to support recovery from economic and public health impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Recently, on Monday, May 10th, the U.S. Department of the Treasury provided detailed guidance on the implementation and rules for that distribution. We have been involved in U.S. Treasury briefs. We've spoken with our lobbyists. We've been in consultation with the International City Managers Association, the Government Finance Officers Association, Florida League of Cities, and most importantly, Leon County and other community partners that we work with for economic recovery and human service support. As an eligible municipality, the city of Tallahassee is estimated to receive $46.2 million from... million from ARP. Recall that up until this point, any funding that has been provided has been provided at a federal level and/or at a state level. And so we were fortunate enough, when Leon County was awarded funding through the CARES Act, to use $5 million of that to support us in fiscal year '20 and '21. This will be the first time that the city has received an allotment to do local work with local dollars, and so that's very encouraging. As part of the process that we go through, we must apply to the U.S. Treasury to receive the allocated funding. Once we're certified, the funds will be allocated to us in two dispersments. We expect to apply in the next 60, have approval for our application in the next 60 to 90 days, and then within one year would get the second distribution of funding from that date. As we know, we don't need to do things linearly, so we're working in parallel with that application to then also talk to our providers to see what contract amendments have to be made, what plans need to be put in place for distribution of the funds, and also then what eligibility requirements need to be planned and put into place so that we're using the time of this next 60 to 90-day period to hit the ground running as soon as that money hits our accounts. The legislation allows us to use then that money until December 31, 2024, and to use all the funds that we receive. To inform us on that process, we've gone to the city's strategic plan as a guide. It identifies key goals and objectives for service levels and results. And with that clarity provided by the plan and continual communication and feedback from the community and the commission, we've made recommendations for use of the ARP funds, and we hope that they meet the Tallahassee's most critical needs and priorities. These next six slides that I have give an overview of the plan category, so to speak. I'll work through those quickly, and then I think we'll have a space to look at the plan in whole after those six slides, and then get timely feedback from you on the plan recommendations. And that overview is in Attachment B and presents the details of the programs that we're considering. The first area that we're considering in the American Relief Plan is the support of public health response for due COVID-19. As you recall, we used Leon County Cares and our own funds to respond to the pandemic to support local pandemic response. We're proposing that as a first phase of the American Relief Plan that we identify $1.6 million to continue to respond to the pandemic. We continue to update testing, vaccination, community outreach, enhanced services to make changes to city facilities and space. As we've done that since March, we've incurred about $560,000, $580,000, and we would reimburse ourselves for that cost for these last four months of our pandemic response. We're also recommending that with the temporary changes that we made to public facilities, plexiglass barriers, spacing changes, and other measures so that we can return to normal operations, that we use the best of those facility changes and do those in other spaces to protect public health. And that recommendation is for $1 million in facility improvements to be included in the spending on the American Relief Plan. Another category of cost recovery that we're recommending is replacement of lost public-sector revenues of $28.2 million. You'll recall, as we completed the fiscal year '20 budget and adopted the fiscal year '21 budget, we used reserves to close gaps to continue to maintain service levels. You'll also recall that we had fewer costs for travel, that we held the line on staff salaries, we rolled back some vehicle replacements. This lost revenue replacement will be very important for those fiscal years, but then there is also the recognition that in the ARP guidance, that we have general fund revenue losses in sales tax, property taxes, gas taxes, and they recommend that we look back at what our collections would have been had the pandemic not hit and bring us to the level of recovery in order to continue to provide a high level of service from police, parks and recreation, public infrastructure, our health and human services, our housing areas, those things that were most closely affected by the pandemic and revenue loss. And so that total is a recommendation for $28.2 million over the four-year period.
Robert, let me jump in real quick on that. Make sure that we stress this. First of all, and I'll say this again at the end, I think you all have done a tremendous job over this past year with the budget. I know there's a lot of behind-the-scenes that goes into it, especially during these circumstances that we've all been facing. But it's easy to look at this budget under the place lost public-sector revenue and see millions of dollars that are being projected that we need to cover in the out-years coming up. And it would be very easy to sit back and say, that's just a number, we have needs immediately. Remind me the importance of, number one, revenue estimates in out-years for the continuity of services, and the importance of making sure that we cover any projected losses for services that we provide, and how that would impact services if we did not.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you for that observation. You know, we talk about revenue collection, property taxes, gas tax, sales tax, as, you know, as revenue. What that really means is labor. 80% of our budget is devoted to people who are providing services across the community. Were we not to replace this revenue, then we would have to make hard decisions about how many people could be put to the streets to do the work. How many grants could we provide to local, public, human service providers?
But in summary, it would have a direct and immediate impact in services provided and quality of life if we did not cover the revenue shortage by estimates in the out-years.
We would be getting to that point. Up until this point, we've been able to use our reserves, our deficiencies fund, to support maintaining that level of service. Had we talked April 7, a month ago, we probably would have been talking about how to make changes to our budget so that we could accommodate revenue loss.
I'm assuming, though, with the opportunity that we have before us, with the federal dollars that are here, this would represent best practices, not using our reserve funds to continue.
Absolutely. Those reserve.
Appreciate it. And, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Just to segue on that as well, you know, we made a commitment during the pandemic to maintain our staffing levels at the level that they were prior to the pandemic. And in order to provide the level of services and the quality of services that we've provided and continue that into the out-years, we're going to need at least that same level of staffing. And certainly, it supports our local economy, because those individuals that will be employees and paid through the city, you know, will be paying sales taxes and property taxes and supporting revenue for the city that way. So, yeah, I mean, I think it's important that we make sure that we're able to maintain our staffing levels to at least the level that we are now. And that we not use our reserves, because, Robert, if I'm correct, that could have an impact even on our bond ratings in the future if we don't have the proper reserves.
Absolutely. Yeah, as you will recall, we've used our reserves in response to hurricanes. As we are reimbursed by FEMA, we've been able to replace those. In this case, we have not had any, we have a plan to restore those deficiencies over a four- or five-year period that we brought back to you. Had we not, if our revenues fell, that would be more and more difficult, and we would have to do that on the backs of services.
Right. Thank you.
This gives us the opportunity to restore those reserves and also maintain the quality services that you expect.
Any other questions? Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So do we have, what would happen if, for example, we do not have the as severe of revenue loss that we're projecting to have in the future? Do we have a plan for then how that money is spent?
We don't at this time, but we do, we are following the methodology that the U.S. Department of the Treasury has provided. We know that this is going to be a dynamic situation. We do know that we have quarterly budget updates to you, and so as we go through the fiscal year, that will become part of our reporting processes. Here's what our original estimates were, here's what the new revenue realization is, here's the difference between that. And then at that point, we would know then how can we best apply and put to use the relief monies that we receive.
Has the Treasury, do we know yet, are there restrictions on how that money, if by some miracle, you know, we run into that issue, how that money can be spent?
The only restrictions that we are aware of right now is they provide a methodology for that revenue loss. We'll continue to follow that methodology as we move forward, and then they have given us guidance that by December in 2023, that the full amount of money is expected to be used.
Used. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you speak to how the revenue loss calculations are calculated? And I guess more specifically, which revenues are being propped up or supplemented?
Sure. We looked at property taxes, sales tax, gas taxes, and other general fund revenues, including blueprint. We looked at what we had projected those revenues to be in 2020, fiscal year 2020. We then looked at that over time and what that growth would have looked like over time had that pandemic not hit those revenue sources, and that's what we're presenting here. Treasury also provided a standard 4.1% growth rate that we could look at to compare against our revenues, and so we compared that also. There was a technical term that's escaping the constraint. Josh probably knows it.
Counterfactual.
Yes.
Counterfactual.
They gave us a counterfactual.
And you couldn't remember that?
calculation.
That's the word of the day, I guess.
Comes up every day.
Right.
And we went through the process of calculating that also. We're looking at, in a later slide, we show the annual lost revenue also that gives the background to that $28.2 million.
Okay. Would you be able to provide kind of a line item of those different property tax, gas tax, and what the projected deficits are?
I don't have that in the slide presentation, but we can.
I want to need it today, just in general?
To, yeah, to CC questions for all the commissioners to see.
Excellent. So my second question is, when we, with the federal funds coming in, we're in a budgetary position as if we didn't take, we're in the same procession that we would have been had the pandemic never happened? Would that be an accurate assessment?
I think that's fair to say.
Okay. And I bring that up because one of the decisions we made last year was to not do a cost-of-living adjustment for our employees, and I think if the federal government has been kind enough to make us whole, it would behoove us to also pass that on to our employees. So I have some other suggestions to make, but I want us to consider doing a 6% cost-of-living adjustment this year to make up for the adjustment we didn't do last year, but also consider any type of bonuses or incentives we can offer employees who have been working from home, using their own personal resources, internet, paper, printer, those sorts of things, that also make them whole.
All right, Robert, keep moving forward.
You know, we've talked about restoring critical public services as being important, but then equally important, if not more important, is recognition in the American Relief Plan that we should address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency. Those include economic harm to workers, households, small businesses, impacted industries, and the public sector. In order to address those negative economic impacts, the plan identifies $16.4 million in the number of areas. We're looking at areas such as homeless services, affordable housing, and human service agency support. If we look at each of the categories, the first area that we look at is homelessness. We're identifying $2.8 million as a recommendation to address those negative economic impacts in the community, and that would provide funding for our four homeless shelters. This would be part of a joint effort with the city and county, with the county adding an additional $3.5 million for the combined investment in homeless services of $6.3 Continuing to address economic, negative economic impacts, we've identified affordable housing as a keystone of our strategic plan. We'd identified a total of $2.7 million in funding as a recommendation, primarily to incentivize adaptive reuse projects to convert vacant or underutilized multifamily properties into affordable rental projects. We would also recommend $3.7 million in ARP funding to be used to increase available funding for down payment assistance programs. With many households unable to accumulate savings that could help them weather the temporary income loss, this would provide mortgage assistance, down payment assistance for inclusionary housing homebuyers, and foreclosure counseling so that we can keep those vulnerable families safely housed and prevent homelessness. Continuing to address negative economic impacts, we're making a recommendation for neighborhood resilience, addressing blight and promoting public health and safety. We want to incentivize neighborhood fresh food markets, urban farm entrepreneurship for food security, and we've identified $3.2 million as a recommendation to be allocated from ARP funds. We believe these resilient investments can also then leverage federal, state, and CRA funding to ensure that neighborhoods can weather the impacts of the pandemic. Continuing to address neighborhood resilience, the recommendation is to provide $1.5 million from the city's ARP allocation, with Leon County providing an additional $1.8 million for a total of $3.3 million. Those would fund essential human service programs. These, often referred to as community human service partnership programs, combat food insecurity, provide legal services to residents facing evictions, they stop foreclosures and help support unemployment appeals, and then they fund targeted needs like vaccine hesitancy, support for small businesses and entrepreneurs, and also providing funding for 211 Big Ben for mental health triage services.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to point out that one of those purple hands on that wall is mine.
Uh-oh.
I worked with a group of little girls a couple of summers ago. We painted that wall. They painted that wall, and I got there just in time to get my purple hand in. So I just wanted to point out that one of those purple hands, I'm not sure which one is mine.
Or yours.
We want to make sure we continue to be able to do purple hands all across the city.
Yours, that's what folks say.
Yours.
Well, much like the hands, there are two hands involved in this, and in the American Relief Plan, the $16.4 million.
Good job, Robert.
$6.8 million comes from the city, and $8.4 million will come from Leon County in partnership to address these negative economic impacts. You have before you, in the slideshow, but also as a printout of the attachment, the larger Attachment B, I said I'd go through the narrative quickly, but also then give context to what we just spoke about in this recommended program funding summary overview. If you look at the attachment and/or the presentation on the screen here, from left to right, we've got your three categories of cost recovery that we're talking about, supporting public health response with $1.6 million, replacing lost public-sector revenue that. that we discussed, $28 million, and then addressing negative economic impacts. Down the left-hand side are some of the detailed programs that I mentioned as I went through the presentation. What we are also conveying here is what we foresee as a recovery plan over the four years, our identification of lost revenue in fiscal year 20, our intention to start contracts and services immediately upon the 60-day application period to get those services out into the community. And then in fiscal year 21, as we prepare this budget, we're identifying lost revenue to close gaps, to continue our high level of quality services, make updates to facilities in accordance with best practices that we've realized through the pandemic, but also then continue these programs in fiscal year 21 over the next few months. Our identification would be, if we applied as of today, May and June would be the 60-day period. We would begin work programs as early as July, August, and September, the last quarter of our 21 fiscal year. We're projecting then, according to formulas and, in some cases, just splitting the money up equally than how the spending might go in fiscal year 22 and 23, our next two years for a total combined effort of $46 million. As you move left to right, you'll notice that one of the headers reflects city and county joint funding. It's probably important to note that in some cases, the city will be paying the county to advance the services that they best provide. The county will be doing the same for some of those services that we best provide, and in many cases, we'll be working together. But this is kind of an overview of how that spending pattern may happen between the city and county over the next four years. Lastly, as you go further to the right, we do then also identify how we see the two equal awards from the federal government for the American Relief Plan being put to use, where we would see the first $23 million, supporting public health response, replacing lost public sector revenue, addressing negative economic impacts, and then a year from now, our ability to then put to use that $23 million through the spending period of 2023. We've got some notes there that describe the programs, much of which I touched on as I went through the six pages. And with one further indulgence, we've got page two, where the totals show how we reconcile over the fiscal years for a grand total, and then American Relief Plan totals of $46.2 million balanced to zero. The notes then support some of the assumptions that the Department of Treasury provided. With that, as maybe contacts for feedback, I do want to mention before I end the presentation is, we will ask you to accept the fiscal year 21 second quarter budget update as we presented it. We will ask you to approve budget amendments as included in the update, and then feedback on the ARP program funding summary in the capital budget. In the context of our next meetings, July 7 would be our opportunity to bring that feedback, that program funding plan back, have it built into a fiscal year 22 proposed operating budget, bring back the detail of a balanced capital budget at that time of the July 7 workshop. We're also continuing with the assumption that we are maintaining our millage rate at 4.1 mils, and so that would be a step that we would take July 7 to affirm that so that we could publish and present that to the public for our public hearings in September.
Commissioner Williams-Cox, and then Commissioner Richardson.
Okay. I think I heard you mention the fire services. So do we anticipate that that is going to happen? The fire services tax is going to happen?
Yes. We've adopted the resolutions and have the ordinances prepared for that fire services fee to go into place, and we've also then confirmed with the county that they're moving in that same direction for October 1 of 2021.
Okay. And then on the budget amendment piece, my comment about looking at the neighborhood piece is if we adopt this today, you're going to be looking at how to find additional opportunity to put more into the neighborhood first plans. I want to make sure that, so if, looking at what we have here, if we need to amend the recommendation number two to include that, then I want to make sure I'm propering in order that that's what's going to happen.
We could take that direction from you. We brought the fiscal year 22 through 26 capital budget to you for that very feedback. We'll bring back that revised capital budget for, as a proposed, capital budget on the 7th, and we'll make sure that we identify a section in there that answers the questions that you have and addresses neighborhood.
Well, if it's in order, I'll go ahead and make the motion because I want to make sure I state it like a minute. So I offered a motion that we accept the fiscal year 21 second quarter budget update as presented, and that we approve budget amendments as included in the update to also include an additional amendment to the neighborhood first allocation.
I would second that, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Motion's on table and seconded. Let's open it up for discussion. Are you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson?
I just wanted to emphasize, Robert, you mentioned it and had not mentioned it earlier in the presentation, but it was, of course, something we agreed on, that our millage rate would be maintained at the 4.1. So what that means is there will not be a property tax increase included in this. I want to emphasize that, that there will not be, because we've already agreed that we will maintain our millage rate at 4.1. I would also, Mr. Mayor, like to also agree with the Mayor Protim in terms of what we provide for our employees. I would suggest that we do at least 3% if we can't do the 6. If we can do the 6, fine, I'm in agreement with that, but at least the 3% for this next fiscal year. But if we can get to the 6 and still balance our budget, I'm all for that as well. I think our employees deserve that. They've done a yeoman's job to continue the quality of, level and quality of services that they've done throughout this pandemic and hurricanes before that, and deserve that kind of support from us and from staff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a clarifying question to the amendment that Commissioner Williams-Cox brought up. The item number two, the budget amendments, my understanding is those were the fiscal year 21 budget amendments? Okay. And then what we're discussing about the neighborhood first funding, that's for fiscal year 22 through 26 Capital Improvement Plan?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not approving the fiscal year 22 to 26 Capital Improvement Plan funding today?
Not entirely.
We're just, okay.
Addressing the neighborhood first.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In a follow-up to that, because I mean, I think we are, want to be forward-looking. You know, I've met with Griffin Heights, and I know they have great plans for their neighborhoods and some other neighborhoods, and I think it would be beneficial when we come back to see how many neighborhood plans we're working on, as you said, and then allocate the dollar amounts going forward. But I agree with the motion, and I'd like to see more investment in these neighborhood plans, because I mean, we see a small project can eat up that budget very quickly, and I think in some of these neighborhoods, we're really trying to be transformational. So I appreciate the motion and look forward to supporting it.
Excellent. Any further comments? Seeing none. The motion on the table made by Commissioner Williams-Cox is for staff recommendation of number one and number two as amended, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Commissioner Matlin?
And before we move on from the budget amendment conversation, there were two projects that we just approved. Just lost my notes. One was, there was an undesignated sales tax 2020 fund for the golf club bathrooms. Do you know the balance of that fund?
I don't offhand, no.
We've got our capital budget person, Cody, and I'll ask him to send me that.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. And then the second amendment said it was coming from the undesignated capital projects fund, I believe, and the balance of those as well. And I bring those two amendments up, just curious of what's in those funds. And at our last couple CRA meetings, it has been expressed that the CRA board would like the city to consider a million-dollar allocation to the Ashmore's project. And I know it was discussed of whether that would have to impact affordable housing, and we're seeing amendments today coming out of undesignated funds altogether. So I think it'll be very beneficial for us to know what pots of money there are and what's undesignated, and I think we have the full support that the city would like to move forward with that project. So I'd like to make a motion that we identify a million dollars in funding for the Ashmore's renovation.
Motion on the table for a million dollars out of.
I will, I'll leave it to the city manager's discretion to identify the accounts and funds, but just as a policy direction to go ahead and identify the money we would use for, to complete that project.
Is this for this fiscal year or for a future fiscal year?
Mr. City Manager, what do you anticipate being the timeline of, yeah, doing the work to figure out what we actually need to do inside that building, engaging with the neighborhoods? I know Commissioner Williams-Cox has taken the lead on this, so I'll defer to y'all on the timeline and how it wants to play out. I just want to make sure we're dedicating the funds to do it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Okay, this is a long story, but I'll make it short. The reason that the Ashmore project was an attraction was because there were some available dollars out there from three years ago that were customized for how they needed to be used. So that was the reason for the Ashmore project even coming forward because of the TDT dollars, extra dollars, if we might say. Now, I don't know if we have extra dollars in the city budget. You know, the city manager would have to let us know that, but if there are, then it's not a matter, the million dollars was not a magical number, it was just what was available. So I have no idea, I don't know if anyone has any idea what it would take to transform that building, but it was attractive because it's a city-owned facility already. There were a million dollars available to do something with it, and it was in a area of the CRA that could also leverage CRA dollars. So in my mind, the long game was that you had some things that were aligning, but then some things have happened, some things have changed. That million dollars of TDT dollars are no longer available because the project is no longer in the CRA. So it's now back to the city budget. As we're trying to recoup and recover, and what I heard in the meeting that I had with some neighborhood friends from Frenchtown was that some of them didn't want a museum, some of them wanted a fresh food market, they wanted jobs, they wanted, so I'm just not real clear on, based on that meeting, I'm not real clear, and I've not seen it, but I've heard that the Neighborhood First Plan also includes a project for Ashmore, and I don't know what that is yet as well, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but if the city manager can find a million dollars, I will support it, but I just wanted to put all of the facts, line them up as how things have occurred, how it started. There was available money already, already identified it could be used, but that money has now been allocated in a different direction. So now what we need to do is determine what the neighborhood really wants to do with that, with that project, and I fully support whatever it is the neighborhood wants to do with the project.
And I agree, and I think that we are all in full support of the redevelopment of Ashmore's. The other magic question is, how much does renovation actually cost? And what will be the purpose of the renovated building? Does that come out of this fiscal year? Does it come out of future fiscal year? So there's several questions that we should discuss and talk about.
Sure. And also how it will be sustained, Mr. Mayor. If a museum is contemplated, how is that going to be sustained? You know, there are museums in the Frenchtown area right now that are not operable because they don't have staff, and so we don't, we want to make sure that that doesn't happen if that's what we decide to do as a commission. I don't know that we're in a rush to do this. I think if we take our time, identify the resources, work with the community, the neighborhood, community action council, to determine what is in fact wanted for the area, if it will be able to be sustained, then we move forward. But I don't see this as a rush, especially in light of the fact that we've got museums in the area now that are not being utilized.
You have four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what I would recommend is maybe we agenda an item and give the city manager a direction to come up with a plan to engage the neighborhood, engage all the stakeholders of what can be done over there.
I second that.
There is a motion on the table to bring an agenda item back to the city commission regarding Ashmore's and moving forward, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Five zero. Mr. Mayor Protim?
I'll come back to you.
You're it.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you have other comments.
I have some questions.
Go ahead and finish up what you have before we move on, Commissioner Porter.
Okay, sure. So breaking down, I think that concludes my comments on the current budget amendments. And then the other things on the agenda are the policy 218, future priorities in the ARP. So I'm looking at some priorities that I would like for us to set for next year's budget moving forward. We've already discussed the neighborhood plans that was on my list, the Ashmore's. I'd like to make a motion for employee compensation and to have that come back. If, if all things considered, our finances would have been the same, and we've historically given a 3% COLA each year, and we're in the same financial position backed by the federal government for the next four years, it just seems like a no-brainer to me that we can make that 6% jump and make the numbers work, because that's been the historic process that we've been on. So I would make a motion that we look, give the city manager a direction to identify a 6% cost of living adjustment to make up for the lack of adjustment last year.
I would second that motion for discussion.
Okay. We've got a motion on the table made by the Mayor Protim to direct the city manager to bring back within the budget a 6% COLA. It's been seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
If I may?
Please.
Just add a little context to see if this is the direction. In commissions, when we talked prior about the budget, that certainly is the direction and intention. The resource management folks have been exploring every avenue. What I would ask for is a little flexibility as it relates to the form that compensation would take, including reduction in healthcare contribution, maybe pension reduction contribution. Those are some of the variables that they're looking at now. I don't think they have that finalized, but ultimately, that does result in compensation increase, and I think that kind of broader holistic look would be beneficial. I share that for your consideration in this discussion.
Mayor Protim?
I would adamantly say it needs to be a salary adjustment, because 3% adjustment, that's compounding for the life of your career. That impacts the citizen not just for the one year they didn't get it, or the employee for the one year they didn't get it, that's 3% less they didn't get for the rest of their career. And so looking at ways we can save them 3% next year, which I think is admirable, I don't think it really goes to the underlying issue that, you know, we've been made whole by the federal government, and we should make our employees whole.
Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I second the motion for discussion, because city manager and I, we've been talking about this the whole time. Because when we went through negotiations with the bargaining units, I held firm, and we all held firm, that employees didn't get. firm, and we all held firm, that employees didn't get raises, so no one else should be getting raises. So I know that in my conversations with the city manager, there is a commitment to make sure that employees are being, gonna be made whole. They've been made whole in the past, and I have the full confidence that they will be made whole again. What I, what I do not want to do is to tie his hands, because if they, if better than 6% can be given, I want them to be able to get the better than 6%, which would include a compensation package. Having worked for the state of Florida a number of years, and, you know, a lot of our employees in, in this city, our state employees, who went a long time without raises. And I think that city employees will agree that they have been, you know, treated very, in my opinion, money-wise, better than state employees have been treated. So I want to, I want to give the flexibility that if there is an opportunity to do better than, than that, which would include, as, as he just mentioned, some other benefits that would result in more, more money, then, then let's do that. I just, I, I just don't want to tie his hands and then it's just a flat 6% and you don't look at anything else. Let's, let's look at the best that we can do for our employees, because they deserve the best. Last year, the best that we could do was to make sure that everyone stayed employed and, and was able to work safely from home. But I know that, and, and what the city manager has, has said to me, and I'm sure he don't mind me sharing this in conversations that we've had in our briefings, is that he's gonna take care of the employees, he's gonna make them whole, he's told me that, and that's a quote. And we're gonna hold him to that. He made, he made, he made, he made that promise to me, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold him to it. So I want to see what, what that, what that amount, what that amount comes to, because it may be greater than, greater than that. And I, I want him to have the flexibility to go greater, if he can go greater, so.
And I would be happy to, as long as the floor is 6%, I'm happy to amend the motion to include those comments.
I, I can't support a motion that ties specifically at 6% or sets a floor at 6% this early on in the budget process. I mean, we are at the beginning, which will culminate with final passage at the end of September. We have not hit hurricane season. I think that, I do agree that we need to provide direction to always and continuously bring back scenarios. What does 3% look like? What does 4.5 look like? Whatever the numbers are, what does 6% look like? Are there creative mechanisms to go above and beyond? But I do not feel comfortable tying our staff's hands this early on in the budget cycle. But I do think that you are hearing the message loud and clear, the direction of the commission wants to go. If the motion is amended to bring back different scenarios as we move forward through the budget process, I can, I can support that. But if we're drawing a hard line with specific numbers right now, we're gonna respectfully have to vote against the motion on the table. Commissioner Richardson-
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and that's exactly what I had in mind. And if it takes a substitute motion, I'll make that. Or if it's just direction to the city manager, I'm in the same vein. I, I just don't see us being hard and fast at this point in the process. I think if we give the city manager direction to come back with those various scenarios, including benefits, because I can tell you, you know, if you reduce that, that healthcare contribution or pension contribution, you know, that, that to me is like a raise. And so I think that what we should, I'd like to say that if it takes a substitute motion, I'll do that. Or if we just give the, the city manager that kind of direction to bring us back the various scenarios to consider as we go forward in this budget process.
Mayor pro temp.
And I'm agreeable to you, amend the motion, as long as we include an option when it comes back for the 6% hard raise and are able to look at those dollar amounts side by side.
I am sure that will be one of the options presented.
Yes. And, and, Mr. Mayor, if I could, if I could add also to that, I'm sorry, just sitting here thinking too, that a couple of things that we as a commission have done is, two new paid holidays have also been added to the compensation package, you know, Emancipation Day with, you know, like tomorrow, tomorrow's, tomorrow's an off day, remember that, don't come to work tomorrow. And also Election Day is also included in that, and that, that too has a, a cost benefit to it as well. So I just wanted to mention that also.
Sure. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to get this wrong, because I, I believe the next check-in would be a proposed budget. I'm looking to Robert to make sure that, I don't know that there's another step in between now and then where there would be scenarios.
Right.
It would be proposed, right? So that the process would be, we've taken the input of the commission along, including this process. We make a proposed budget, it has a certain assumptions, it's not a scenario-based assumption, it would be an assumption. And then that would, you know, at that point, we would get the feedback from the commission based on that assumption. So I'm looking to Robert to make sure I'm anticipating the next steps right, but I believe that's where we are in the process.
You're, you're correct with our scheduled commission meetings and workshops that July 7th would be a proposed budget.
Thank you, Robert. So, Mr. Mayor, the way, the mechanics of the process would work is that with all the feedback of the commission, clearly Commissioner Williams-Cox, you, you didn't have to put words on your mouth, because you know I said them. And you know that I know that our most precious asset, our greatest resource in the city of Tallahassee, and the service we provide is our employees. We know that, and we've all struggled over the last year to make sure that we take care of employees and reward them for the good work they're doing. So you know I'm committed to that, and all of my colleagues know that as well. What we also know is that the compensation package is complicated, there are various elements to it, and, and you can, you can maximize the benefit to an employee through certain efforts. And so that's what we've been studying. But the, the next step would be for the proposed budget that, that I would share with the mayor and commissioners to include a recommended action. It wouldn't be a list of scenarios, it'd be a recommended action. That would be one element of it. I think that I clearly have enough direction in the priorities of the commission, and I can tell you, we are going to work with the sharpest pencil available to make sure the compensation for employees is, is as good as it can possibly be in compounding in future years. That is not one-time limited. So I just want to make sure that there was no expectation there'd be another iteration between that proposed budget.
I understand, and maybe I mixed my words a little bit, but I also understand that you will bring back a proposed recommended action at the July meeting. However, in preparation for that proposed, in trying to figure out what exactly is the best compensation, I am sure y'all will run different scenarios-
Sure.
-with the different impacts on the budget. And I do know, at least in my briefings, y'all have always done a great job of not only saying, "This is the recommended action, this is how we got here. We considered this, and this was what the impact was. We considered this, and this is what the impact was." So you are absolutely correct. There will not be different scenarios ever be brought back in this spoke, I apologize. However, I would still love to know your thought process as you come up with the recommended action for July, and I'm sure my colleagues would too, of we considered this in this package, and this is what the impact was, but we have recommended this particular package because we think that this is the greatest package that we could. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Wonderful. Okay, so, Mr. Mayor pro temp, it is your motion, are you willing to-
I'll, I'll withdraw the motion. I think we've provided adequate direction. I think the city manager knows where we stand.
Excellent.
And we can, we can move on. The next issue, in the same vein, the, the citizens of Florida have decided it's time to transition to a $15 minimum wage. And we've had this conversation in the past, we got to 12, I don't think we got our seasonal employees to 12. So I'm asking the city manager, when I'm looking at the labor market right now, it's, it's tight, you know, we're seeing it all across our community of especially filling these low-wage, lower-wage positions. So I, I just wanted to kick that over to you. I know the, the ballot amendment gave us a few years to get there, but, but I'm wondering how quickly, both for retaining employees and recruiting new employees to some of these positions, that we can start offering a $15 minimum wage to all employees.
Mr. Manager?
Robert might be able to answer this better than me, but, but that is contemplated in this year's budget to move in that direction. And forgive me, I don't remember the amount, but there was, there, there is an, an expected stair step from 12 to, and forgive me, I don't remember the number, Robert, what y'all have included in your, in your math. If you know it, please share it with us.
I think we're, I think we were at 13, based on the guidance for the timing, but certainly-
So tentatively, for next year's budget, proposed budget, it would include a move from $12 to $13 an hour, consistent with the overall direction of a $15 an hour minimum wage. And, and what you hear is, this is like a puzzle. It all has to fit together, and, and Robert and his team are trying to fit it together. And so there, there's some scenarios and kind of, you know, evaluation that's happening. So that's not written in stone, that would happen in the proposed budget to fit it all together. But that, that is the direction. We have experienced some labor shortage constraint, I think, like the, you know, the rest of the world, the region, of course, some of our frontline staff. I will say that our lifecards, we have had a very difficult time recruiting lifecards this summer. And, you know, within the, the discretion of the department director, that pay was increased, I don't know how much it was increased, to try to attract more. So I think we find ourselves very much in the same position with other providers, service providers, where either seasonal help or part-time help is difficult to attract. So that does push us to make sure that we can attract those and we pay more. Not the same, but similar, we have implemented with the city commission's approval, a signing bonus for our police officers. I think that would be kind of that same vein, where there is an acknowledgement, there's a, there's a market impact in, in the need to be creative in the recruitment. So we are certainly methodically moving to a higher wage to comport with at least a $15 minimum wage. Once the market sets at $15, I think we probably will have to be higher than that. And that is for a lot of our frontline positions. So that, that's the, the movement, we would include that in the proposed budget. And then as we speak for those jobs that are more difficult to fill at the moment, we're taking action as necessary.
So if I'm understanding correctly, the July proposed budget will include our next steps in the multi-year process of making it $15.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Williams-Cox, and then we'll come back to you.
Because I know that our staff can do anything. I want to appeal to us to, let's go beyond the next step. Let's go to 15. Let's see what it looks like. I mean, it's, it's a proposed budget. We, we hadn't agreed to it, let's, let's just see what 15 looks like. See, city of Tallahassee, we, we lead. We, we lead where we go. And what we want to do is, we want to send a message. We send a message by having Emancipation Day be a paid holiday. We send a message by making sure Election Day is a holiday. We've done a number of things that we are asking the rest of the state to follow us. So let's go ahead and go bold into that new world, and let's see what $15 an hour looks like for every employee. So that if we can, if we can, if we can do it without a degradation of services, then we've done it. We don't have to keep holding our breath every year trying to figure out, are we gonna get there, are we gonna get there? So if we've gone from 12 to 13, then let's go on to 15, and let's see what it looks like. We're just looking at numbers. We, we haven't committed, we're just looking at numbers. And I, I think we can do it. You know, cut my commission office budget a little bit, if, if that helps. We, we haven't, we haven't used it in this past year anyway, we hadn't been able to travel or do anything. Take it from wherever you need to take it from. All I've had to do was buy some, you know, pay from a cell phone, so people can reach me and get some office supplies. But we need to see what it looks like. I, I, what bothers me is I, I can't, I can't manage with the, wondering what's gonna happen over the mountain. Tell me what's over the mountain, and then we can deal with it. How fast can we, can we go to the mountain? So let's go ahead, let's just do it and see what it looks like. Because seasonal employees, temporary employees, all employees help make this city what it is. And I know that if we, if we do this, the money is gonna come back because it's gonna be spent locally.
Yeah.
And we're gonna get it back. So let's just, let's just, let's just see what, let's just go and see what it looks like. Get the gas.
So, Mr. Manager, I think that you're hearing the direction is, is that we would like to see the proposal and how it would impact the budget at $15 an hour in July.
May I add something that, Mr. Mayor?
Please, please.
The, in, in the most challenging issues, I want to be real clear on this, because I think we'd be remiss if we just simply raised the bar to $15. That's, that's not a workable solution, because we increase compensation compression. So I think in what we would share, would try to deal with that compression. We have employees making $15 an hour now, or $15.25 an hour now. As we move others to 15, we need to move them too. I, I don't think you can just simply, and so I'm sharing this for consideration, I don't think you can just simply move the bar to 15 as part of the complexity of it. You've got to deal a little bit with that compression that you create for employees. So that would be, as we bring something back, I think we have to address that, and that would be part of our consideration.
Okay, and I'm, I'm fine with, do whatever you need to do. See, I know the state of Florida does not give you a good model to work from, but the state of Florida says that if someone is making this amount, then this is what their, their bonus or their increase would be. So the people who are making above that don't expect, because it's been told that, if you are, for instance, if you're already making $15 an hour, you're where you need to be. We're trying to bring others up to that, to that. So, you know, I'm not belaboring the point, I know you hear me loud and clear, and we'll, we'll talk further when I, in our private conversations. And so you can, I can help you understand, and you can help me understand, but I know you have to do some things, and I, I don't want to come do what y'all do. But do your thing, but do it with $15, and let's see what it looks like.
Back to Commissioner Mattler.
I heard that loud and clear. Do we, do we need a motion for that direction?
I, I would, I would like a motion, yes, sir.
Sure.
And, and I believe I can just move the bar to $15, and, and so I think it would be good to have a motion.
Okay, sure.
Motion on the table made by Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. You have four.
I have two more. Do we have department directors with us on WebEx, or?
We do, yes, sir.
I, I wanted to ask Ms. Ajataya, if, if you're with us, on the, the ARP funding for incentivizing contractors to manage vacant older student housing. Are you working directly on that?
Mr. Manager, and your team?
Good morning, commissioners. If you can, if you can hear me, I'm here, yes. Our team is working very closely with the, with resource management and as many partners as we can find to make sure we can implement those ARP proposals.
And, and is there, has there been any direction or policy of just, just how that bucket will be spent, or what type of incentives would be created?
Commissioner, we would lean on your earlier direction in the city commission meeting where you directed us to develop a proposal, or at least an ordinance of incentives that we can confer to developers. We would, we would stay in line with that, as private developers engage, as they often have conceptual ideas, and staff works with them to align it with our strategic priorities. And to the extent that they can help us achieve those goals, the various types of incentives would be allowed for their project.
Okay. Yeah, thank you so much. And I know we put a, a lot of pressure on you to go save the world in Tallahassee, and this is another step in that direction, but we do appreciate all the work that you're doing. Secondly, I had a few questions on, on the fire budget. Is the fire chief with us?
Chief Gaines?
I, I don't believe so, no, sir.
Okay. Some of these questions, well, I guess, well, that's Robert. On, on the 21 fire fund revenues, there's fire services that, fire services governmental for individual governments that pay fire services. Do we know the breakdown of what each individual government pays into that?
So the fire services fee is across residential, commercial properties, it includes those government. I don't have the- I don't have the detail of how each of those governmental entities pays into that, but we can get that information to you.
Okay. And do you know what the historic contribution from Leon County Schools to the fire services fee has been?
No, not offhand.
Okay. Do you?
I believe we know approximately. For fire service fee, Leon County Schools, I believe it's $900,000 to $1 million a year. Well, do you agree?
Yes.
That range, okay. Do we have any organizations or property owners that are exempt from the fire assessment or the fire fee?
Yes. Churches by ordinance that qualify are exempt from the fire service fee.
I'd say on page 173 of the budget, under allocated accounts, there's utility services expense and then there's the actual utility charges. What goes under the utility services expense?
Utility services is the billing and revenue recovery operation. And so it's James Barnes Group. They also operate the call center. They also do wholesale, well, actually, that's been moved to electric. But in essence, it's the call center and the utility billing operation.
And that, and how does that differ from revenue collection?
That revenue collection is in the Treasury Clerk's office. They are the ones, the recipients of that revenue to invest in.
Yeah, I would agree. Well, I'm not sure what the question was there as to what distinction you're looking at. You said utility services and something else.
The utility charges, the distinction was, yeah.
So utility services would include both of those pieces from the bill, from the billing to the collection and everything in between, call center and whatever else it might be.
Got it, okay. There's a charge on the fire fee for community relations. What, do you know what, without the chief being here, do we know what community relations charges the fire department generates?
Commissioner, you're asking what the expense, allocated expense entails?
Yes.
That's, that's general communications and marketing and overall efforts of the city. So you'll see a list of those allocated accounts. Those are internal services provided, generally speaking. So I think you hear the theme, utility account management, revenue collection. But it would be all the things that the city does generally in the portion assignable to the fire departments reflected in those allocated accounts.
Okay.
So Office of Management and Budget, OMB Circular 87, gives guidance to local governments on recovering indirect costs from, from units of service within the government. We go through a cost allocation process and an internal service fund, establishing those internal service funds where we can. We charge directly for those services. For example, fleet, there's actually repairs and maintenance records that are kept. Those are used to establish the budget. And then during the year, as they use services, then they pay directly for, for that oil change or that tire replacement or that equipment upkeep. So there's a number of them are directly charged. There's also others that are indirectly charged. We don't know the level of service because we need to define how the service is delivered. Many cases, it's accounting transactions, it's the number of personnel that are supported, it's network identification, PCs, communication devices. And so it's a combination of hundreds of metrics that we use to then allocate that cost to each respective fund and each respective department for them to pay for their fair share of that service.
Okay. That may segue into my next question was the, I saw the computer equipment costs were about $1,200 a year and the TNI charges were 2.1 million. So that's based on those same types of metrics?
Right. And it's provision of the network is one aspect of it. And so everybody has a desktop or laptop or communication device. So that's part of the allocation. Another part is apps and/or support systems that the fire department needs in order to provide its services. And so that development and that maintenance support cost is directly charged to them. And then in addition to that, there's any, any new apps that are, are being developed that would be, there's, there's time for that development that's included in that cost.
Okay, thank you. And one final thing, Mr. Mayor, thank you for indulging me.
Workshop, now time to do it.
So back to the ARP. Mr. City Manager, I want to continue to track our utility accounts. And if we, I think we're in a very good shape right now from, from what I'm hearing from, from people and being able to set up payment plans and that sort of thing as long as they make contact. But as we go down the line, I'm, I'm just curious if resources will still be available, if there are resources available for people who maybe got an extension for 30 days or 60 days. And I want to make sure we're not setting ourselves up to have an explosion of disconnects if people just generally can't access money at all. So working with the county, working with the city ARP for those people and really the people who are, who, people live in poverty, people who are really struggling. And, you know, we know people who, when they get their utilities disconnected, they're disconnected for a week or two weeks or three weeks, people with children. I just want to make sure there's something in our community. If those people didn't get all the warning signs and they're going down that path now from a historic bill that we're able to help them. So I would like us to just, as, as we're talking to customers and we're gathering more information of who stands where, if it seems that we need to work with a nonprofit or create a fund for people to apply for to make up that deficit, I'd like to see us go in that direction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first, I want to say thank you for, for all the information, for the presentation, for all the work that you're doing. I can only imagine. And I'm, I was happy to hear Commissioner Matlow's comments and the, the things that we gave direction on. I think that's going to be good stuff and important for us. I had a few questions, so have, one thing that I would like to see is, and I think, I know that you're waiting on our direction a little bit. In general, I'm very pleased with the recommended ARP program funding. I would also like to see some more detail for some of these. You know, specifically how, what this funding would go to. Some of that, though, I think I can ask offline. I also do, you know, to Commissioner Matlow's point, I understand and I want, for those who are listening to understand too, some of the, some of the things such as utilities, those payments, there are other options for people to receive assistance. Whereas these are initiatives where there are really not many other options for, for funding. And so I think that how we're looking at this makes sense. But I do hope that we have some sort of wiggle room or way that if we're talking about people who are in extreme poverty, whose utilities have been disconnected, that we, we have some way to assist them if they don't qualify for other forms of assistance or if, if that assistance runs, runs out. So for these, for the ARP funding, are these expenditures or these commitments that we're considering supplemental, like above and beyond what we already have budgeted in these, in these areas?
Yes, these are supplemental to the contracts we currently have in place and the proposed contracts that we'll have in place in 22.
Okay. One, go ahead.
We are, we are reminding our partners that this is non-recurring dollars. And so we, we are working with them to ensure that they're taking action that addresses pandemic impacts and/or one-time actions that can support their operations to make it stronger for, for the longer term. With the reminder that this funding is, you know, we, we will not have $46 million to continue a level of support beyond where we're going in the next three years.
Okay, and for the, the funding for homelessness, I forget exactly where I was reading. I mean, what impact will this funding have, if any, on our CHSP process and how we typically allocate those funds?
The CHSP process is in its second year of award in 22, fiscal year 22. And so the evaluation process has been completed. Awards were made in 21. That, that commitment is for a two-year process. And so those CHSP awards have been made and will be committed to in 22. When we speak to human service support here, that's the incremental cost above and beyond that CHSP process, if that, if that answers your question.
Okay, yes. Have we yet taken action on policy 218? Was that something we did as part of option one and two?
Yes.
Yes?
That was my understanding of the vote, yes, was to adopt, accept changes to the strike and add of that policy.
One thing, and this is-
On point, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Bruton?
I, I wasn't under the impression that one or two included a policy update and I don't see it listed on the screen as, as presented.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear your question.
She, she mentioned in the agenda materials, there's an updating commission policy 218. I don't, I didn't think we had taken a vote on that and I don't see it listed under, is it the budget amendments and the budget update, but not that specific policy? Doesn't seem to be included in one and two.
Where do we stand, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, that was our expectation, but we looked at you and the maker of the motion.
Attorney as in the clerk, can we go back and review the motion that was made to make sure that we're in a proper place? Was 218 included or not?
Well, as, as it was discussed, I believe the motion was to approve the items outlined on, on the slide, as Commissioner Matlow was pointing to, items one, two, and three. So the, the question is, was commission policy 218 included in one of those items? I defer to the folks who prepared the item as to what that intent was. But I see approved the budget, second quarter budget update, approved the budget amendments and provide the feedback on the recommended ARP. So I would think two might be the, the place that that would have been, would have been contemplated. But again, I'll defer to the staff who prepared the item.
I agree.
Madam Attorney, would it, would a, I, without explicitly updating a policy, it being included in agenda materials, but not explicitly adopting a change in commission policy, would it be more beneficial to take that vote separately?
I think as you read it, certainly the intention was to include it in as, as to, but you certainly can clarify that or take whatever action this commission thinks appropriate.
Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, one thing in the, if possible, in the future, if we can just be as, you know, I must have been confused. I did not realize that that's what, that we were including that when we voted on number two. If I may make some comments on it, I, I understand that, and I got clarification on this. This is something that is going to basically make policy 218 consistent with our other procurement policies. And in that sense, we're not necessarily really changing anything. A recommendation that I was going to make was that if we wanted to consider adding language that such change orders will come back to the city for approval if it is in excess of the funding amount that we specified in the capital improvement budget. So that no, not required to come back to us if it's already what we've approved. But if it's in excess of what we approved, that it come back to us. I'm not sure if that's something-
And Commissioner, that, that is the current policy.
That is the current policy, okay.
As long as the commission approves a budget, let's say for a million dollars, the manager has authority to do change orders up to that million dollars, nothing above what's been appropriated by the city commission.
Okay, okay, thank you.
On point, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Bruton?
And just for clarification on that, that process, on that, that policy, is that for the authority of the capital improvement budget in its entirety? Or is that line item per project with the max spending authority is to do a change order?
It's per project.
And Madam Attorney, is that explicitly stated in the policy?
It is explicitly stated in policy 242.
Okay, but not in policy 218?
I, I didn't see it specifically stated, no, in 218.
Yeah, I, I think it would be helpful to just include that, to make them consistent and just give the procurement policy in the same statements in policy 218, the same and explicitly state that, I know. Madam Attorney, I asked you this in briefing and you sent recommended, a recommended sentence that could be added. And I'd be happy if we could either read that into the record or maybe just bring this back to a policy commission and direction meeting. So it's not, we're not doing policy updates in the middle of our budget workshops in the future. And they're not different items, they just kind of avoid this type of confusion. I mean, none of this is consequential. It's just, you know, good practice of a little confusion that was caused by, by reading the policy. Do you have that language?
Yes, and, and what you would have to do, because you've already passed this item, is you would have to reconsider that portion, make a motion for reconsideration of that portion. But this was the language and it's just a clarification. I mean, it's already stated in one, in procurement policy 242. But you could state such language and language as such change, this is, would be added at the bottom of page 13. Such change orders shall be submitted to the city commission if in excess of the funding amount specified in the capital budget. So it's just a simple clarification.
Well, I would believe that we just read it into the record at a budget workshop. It is policy. We're all comfortable where we are?
Yes.
Back to Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So these are some conversations that I've had with our, with our city manager. I wanted to just express, I have a couple of ideas and priorities that I want to see considered. One is, you know, I'm worried that we might be spending, I mean, I, I'm curious to hear A benis feedback, others' feedback, that we're committing more to incentivizing home ownership than some of the rental, than more might be needed for rental assistance for the specific target populations that I'm thinking of who, who need it most and who've been impacted most by COVID. One thing that I brought up to the city manager that I've seen in other cities and I'd like to see us consider as perhaps part of that would be some rental deposit assistance. There's a lot of people who can afford their rent. They can't necessarily afford first, second month and their deposit all at once if they're moving to a new place. So I think that is something that, that we discuss, that I'd like to see us perhaps consider as part of the, the assistance that we're providing to folks. Another thing that I don't know if we've considered, you know, a couple of weeks ago, the Democrat published an article about the, the suicide rates increasing pretty significantly and just the mental health impact that COVID has taken. I just wonder if there's, there's something either that we're already doing or that we, we could do. I don't, at this moment, have a recommendation or an idea, but I just, I know that we've taken steps with the mental health unit with TPD. But I just, that's something that I plan to do a little research on because I do think it's an important part of our community's recovery and healing with COVID. And then just two other things, I mean, I, I'm really, I agree with the comments that have already been made about the neighborhood planning. I mean, making sure that we understand what that commitment is, where that figure's coming from. If we, if we need to increase it, you know, those details I think are going to be important. I would also, something that is a, a passion of mine and something that I think is one of the most important aspects of any city in general and its economic vitality is going to be transit and increasing walkability. I personally, I can only speak for myself, I never want to spend any more money, public dollars, on parking garages if we can invest that in increasing our walkability and our transit and connectivity in other ways. So that's something that's not necessarily a comment on anything here. It's just a priority of mine that I would like to see us thinking about a little bit more. And then I know in some of our CRA discussions about just, I think everyone's looking forward in 2021, 2022 to being together, you know, in person as we, as we get healthier, as we're all vaccinated and whatever attention we need to give to Parks and Rec with program, programming, with recreational activities. I think those things are really important too for, for our mental health. too for, for our mental health, for our community, and addressing a lot of the issues we talk about with public safety, I think is really, really critical. So those are just some things that I'll, that I've been working on, that I've been hearing from the community and, and plan to kind of be in discussion about. So I have one, one final question. I'm just curious, so with policy 218, when part of the reasons we did, the commission made this decision 10 or so years ago was to see if it would stimulate the economy, if it would have these benefits of sort of streamlining this process, did we, have we followed that all? Did we notice that?
I think role, Assistant City Manager Lavine, he was intimately involved in that. And I think the answer is yes, and it worked really well, but, but I'll ask him to comment on it.
Yeah, Commissioner, we started that as a pilot project back when the economy sort of tanked in 2007, 2008. And the purpose was to speed up releasing funds into the community to support the local economy. And so we made a lot of changes to permitting processes, to procurement processes. I want to say, if I'm remembering correctly, that the procurement process was cut from like 90 days on average to like less than 30 days when we were releasing money to the community. And so there were updates to the commission after we did the pilot project that showed the success of the program and that's why the commission made those permanent. Yes, contracts and, and change orders are being processed a lot quicker. Money is being released to the contractors, which in turn pay the workers. So it has helped the economy locally since we implemented this project. And what happened is we updated the procurement policy and the capital projects management policy was never updated. But we've been, we've been practicing under that policy ever since.
Right, no, I understand. And I, I was just curious because that's just an important thing to know, you know, always if we did something, did it have the intended impact that we wanted it to have? And so, you know, that's good news. And then just one last thing really quickly, I, do we have something, I know that, you know, I've referenced before some of the old city budgets I've seen. I was, this was very, very helpful, the, the line item budget. I was just wondering, some of the, do we have any accompanying documents or narrative? I mean, because some of this stuff, and, and, you know, I was digging through and I'm going to need to keep digging through because this is my first go around with this. I don't always know what everything covers, you know? And if I were just a resident trying to understand my budget, I don't feel like this would give me enough information. And I was looking at some of the, our previous budgets that have some, I know you're familiar with them, some narrative, I mean, this is what this does, you know, explaining. If that's something, I know that I would like to see that. I think it would benefit me, who's making some of these decisions, and then the, the community at large who wants to participate. Is that something that, that we have or that we can do?
Yes, we, we, we have an online budget that provides the details of the funds, departments, divisions of the city government that accompanies what the, the line item budget that you have before you. It, it's, it's online. And so the idea would be as you step through each of the funds, departments, divisions, you would see the background responsibilities, ties to the strategic plan, personnel summaries and, and then supporting information to, to describe that, that line item budget that you're looking at.
Okay. And is there any, is that something that is like in one place where I can print it all at once? Or do you have to like click through it to make?
Rather than turning pages to go through it, it is clickable on the computer. And that's the approach that we've gone to over the last three years. GFOA has headed in that direction and is actually awarding additional recognition for that online approach. And so that seems to be, and then it's, it's scalable and searchable for anyone to find, to, to, to enter at any point that they want. And then the, the last strength of it is that, that immediately, you know, you can communicate with us rather than writing questions on a piece of paper and then, and then sharing those at a separate time. So that is all online.
Okay, thank you.
That's, yeah, that's, we, we would be glad to walk through and have kind of walked through that, that setting of, of that, that process of how that budget appears and would be glad to do it again.
Okay.
Well, I want to commend you all. Excellent job today. Great presentation. Again, I know that these are difficult times, unique times, and I'm very proud to work with each and every one of you. Any further business?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Williams Cox. I'm sorry, I, I'd like to weigh in on, on the ARP. I, I know we've, we've been at this for a minute, but I wanted to also compliment you guys on a terrific job. I'm, I'm especially happy to see the more attention being, being given to the, the minority lending program, the small business support that's, that's included in here, the entrepreneurial support as well as food insecurities, dealing with those, those things that are very, very important and the neighborhood resilience. And like Mayor Protim, I spent some time with the Griffin Heights Neighborhood Association. And I'm, I'm confident that for what their, what their neighborhood first plan is, is asking for, we'll be able to work with them in other neighborhoods closely. That's why I'm having such a keen eye on those neighborhood first plans because we've got to make sure that our neighborhoods are secure and that they have what they need to continue to be the neighborhoods that we expect and anticipate. And particularly in those neighborhoods in those areas that have been kind of in, in, in need of repair and restoration. I'll, I'll put it that way. There are some neighborhoods that are doing just fine and there are some neighborhoods that are not. And so I want us to continue to pay attention to all neighborhoods, but especially those who need not a handout, but they need a hand up. And let's do what we, we can to, to assist them. And in, in, in that regard, I just, just wanted to thank you all for the foresight of how this can actually be done and also how we can collaborate with the county. I know that any, if there's any state dollar opportunities that would have had to come through the Florida Legislature, but if there are state agencies that have received some funding that we could also leverage, like DOT, you know, DEP and, and others, to help us reach some of these, these goals, I, I know that you will reach out to them and let them know, hey, you know, we, we want to give you some opportunities. Because I understand that recently Congressman Lawson had an opportunity in his office to, to submit a proposal. So anywhere that there is funding available at the federal, including what we, we have here, state, local, wherever, so that we can make our city pop, is what the kids say, make it a cool kids. We need to make our city pop. We're the capital city and we don't, we, we, we need to continue to lead from the top. And I want to thank you for the effort that you put into this and for the listening to not only the commission, but listening to the community and helping us to do what we can to help one another. So thank you for, thank you for that.
Commissioner Richardson?
Just very briefly, I, I want to also commend the city manager for his leadership and particularly our budget staff. In the six years that I've been on this commission, you all have done a tremendous job year after year. I, I can't even, I can't recall any budget issues that we've had in the time that I've been on the commission. And it certainly speaks volumes to the kind of expertise and professionalism that you all bring to this process. That has certainly been shown here today. You all have captured all of the commission's priorities in the budget that you've proposed. And, and that what that suggests is that you've heard what we've said, you've looked at our strategic plan and where we're trying to go. And so I wanted to thank you all for that. Commissioner Williams Cox, I agree with you too, that this budget also reflects what we've heard from the community in terms of what the community's priorities are as well, not just our priorities, but what the community says. It's been a bottom up and a top down approach to developing this budget. So it's, I think it's something that we can all be proud of and I look forward to moving forward in how we implement this to make our community be that all America city that we all expect her to be regardless of where or what zip code you live in. So again, Mr. City Manager, thank you for your leadership and your staff for all that you've done to get us to where we are. I look forward to your proposal when it comes back to us in July. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. We stand adjourned.